Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. It's wonderful to have you here. Thank you for your patience. It's time to start the meeting, so if you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, Mayor Keplish is attending the commission meeting via telephone. Leonard, are you there?
I'm here. Yes, I'm present.
Thank you, sir. Our thoughts are with you and your granddaughter Samantha as you're waiting for the next information and all of the things you're going through.
Thank you.
This evening additionally, if you are present via telephone, please identify yourselves for the minutes of the meeting. Is there anyone else listening in via telephone this evening?
Clifford Turner with Selective Site Consultants. I am on conference call and team meeting, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
David Swanker, City Clerk.
David Swanker, City Clerk.
David.
Terry Lieberger, Director of Utilities.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else? It's our ability here to mute your microphones if you are listening in, so if you do need to, I guess we will be able, we will not be able to mute all microphones because Mayor Keplish is online, so if you are other than Mayor Keplish, would you please mute your microphone unless you are preparing to speak to us? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda this evening. I have a note here that Item C from the consent agenda will be removed from this evening's agenda entirely, as that event has been canceled. Also, we have an additional presentation from the Niawalla Board to add to Item 5. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none.
I have no revisions or additions either.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as I have modified it?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is...
This is Mayor Keplish. I vote aye.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda is approved as modified. Appointments this evening is an announcement...
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Hayes.
Yes.
Can I clarify that according to protocol, when I vote, do I need to identify myself that it is me making the motion or making the vote?
I'm referring that question to the city attorney.
I mean, everybody, I mean, you and Louis know who it is, but if somebody's listening by conference call, they might not be able to distinguish that.
Mayor, I believe you are right. You should continue to identify yourself as you vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appointments, I have an announcement this evening that the Tree Board has one expired term and is accepting applications for that open position, and they are due by August the 7th. If you're interested in serving on the Tree Board, your application is due by August the 7th. Public hearings this evening include two items. The first is a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structures, or there are two structures, both will get their own public hearing, but the first is 1033 North Seventeenth Place. David?
Vice Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, this structure was involved in a flood about a year ago, and then it was involved in a fire this past spring. At this time, I was contacted by the owner Tuesday, informing me that she is going to have the structure condemned and that she will be in to see the city clerk on Friday to get her demo permit. I don't know if she is present or not.
At this time, then, David, I should open the public hearing. Are there anyone, is there anyone here present to speak to 1033 North Seventeenth Place? Commissioners, do you have any questions of David?
I'm familiar with the owners of the house. I've been in the house when it flooded back in August of whatever year that was, so, yeah, I really don't have any, but I know who they are.
Vice Mayor, I would recommend we go ahead with the condemnation. I mean, she has said she will get that, but I would recommend we go ahead and proceed at this time, when you're ready to make that decision, and she would have 30 days to commence if you guys adopted that resolution to proceed with either condemnation removal or diligently repairing that, so I would recommend we proceed.
Thank you, David. Mayor Keplish?
Yes, the connection is bad. It's real weak on hearing the microphone. Did David say that the owner plans to have the house rased himself?
Leonard, can you hear me? She said she is in contact with a local contractor, and she plans to come in Friday if City Hall is open and get her demo permit. If not, she will come in as soon as possible. Her plan is to proceed, to remove it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Then, if there is no one else to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, discussion?
I'm good, Mayor.
I have no...
Sorry, Commissioner Hayes.
And this is Mayor Keplish. I have no further questions.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to condemn 1033 North Seventeenth Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was Mayor Keplish making an aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Property 1516 and 1/2 West Laurel Street. Open the public hearing, and David, you may speak.
Vice Mayor, this property was involved in a structure fire. This is an outbuilding to other, to the main residence on the property. The homeowners have successfully cleared the lot and met all of the requirements, so I ask, I do not believe we have any insurance proceeds. I don't believe they had any, but I would ask that, I believe the word Jeff, is adjourn the hearing and return any proceeds that we may be holding and close this condemnation.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner, comments?
I have none.
And this is Mayor Keplish. I have none.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to move to rescind the condemnation of 1516 and 1/2 West Laurel Street and return any insurance proceeds being held by the city.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Mayor Keplish. I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Keplish, aye.
The consent agenda is next. We have a motion to accept it with the removal of Item C. I move that we adopt the consent agenda with the removal of Item C.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mayor Keplish, aye.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation of stanchions from Leadership Independence. Do we have members of Leadership Independence here to make a presentation?
I'm representing Leadership Independence tonight, as well as some of our fellow classmates. Last time we spoke, we were discussing approval for stanchions to be placed downtown, and tonight we are here to present them to the city and say, we've done it. Here they are. So, that's, this is one of them that you'll see located around town, and, yeah.
Well, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I know you guys have worked real hard to bring this about, and they look fantastic. I've seen them out downtown. Do we want a presentation photograph, or is this good enough?
Yes, please, if you don't mind a quick picture of them.
Shall we?
There you go, very official.
One more, please.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, they look awesome, and they are like 1,000 by 10,000 improvement over the barricades. Nothing against the barricades, but thank you.
We now have a presentation from the Niawalla Board.
We're doing an official announcement. Niawalla 2020, Generalist Samo Janet Demo and the Niawalla Board of Directors announce a significant change to the 2020 Niawalla Festival. Due to the evolving COVID-19 health crisis, the Niawalla Board has reached the difficult decision to cancel all Niawalla events, with the exception of Queen Neela the 79th and the Medallion Hunt. Current plans for this year do include a scaled-back Niawalla Headquarters storefront, where festival-goers will find yearly buttons, program books, clothing, and some standard Niawalla merchandise. Queen Directors have a detailed plan in place to proceed with the Queen Neela Pageant designed to maximize participant safety. More information on Queen Neela Pageant and the Niawalla Medallion Hunt will be revealed in the coming weeks. Watch for other announcements online and in area news outlets, as alternative events may be added if they can be done so safely. The impact of this scaled-back Niawalla Festival will be felt by our community, our volunteers, and our businesses. It was the Board's hope that a full Niawalla celebration could proceed, as it has in previous years. However, we can't in good conscience proceed with all activities and risk the safety of our participants, festival-goers, entertainers, vendors, volunteers, and sponsors. Please check our website at www.niawalla.com and the Niawalla Facebook page for updates on Niawalla 2020. Teamwork makes the dream work. We are all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Well, there's nothing that makes me sadder than to look forward to October without Niawalla. It just seems like it's the, an abundance of caution is necessary at this time, but it's still sad to think of all the, all the work and all the people that are involved with Niawalla missing that opportunity this year. Thank you all for your hard work on the Niawalla Board, and we hope we come back stronger than Continuing with the agenda this evening, items for commission action. The first item is to consider whether or not to adopt an ordinance expanding the sale at retail of cereal malt beverage and alcoholic liquor on Sundays. This evening, we have, should we start with public concerns? Is that the process? We have a speaker to this agenda item this evening, Mike Boravetz. Are you here? Hi, Mike. Come up to the microphone, and just a reminder, it is important so that the mayor can hear your speaking, that you speak directly into the microphone and...
Sure, absolutely.
And speak right on. Thank you, Mike.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. I really have nothing to add from our previous meetings, from the discussions that we've had, unless I can answer something for you as you all consider this item.
I have no questions, Mike. Thank you.
Mayor Keplish, do you have questions for Mike?
This is Mayor Keplish. No, I don't have any further questions from your, our other discussions.
I do not either, Mike, but thank you for your dedication to this subject, and the information you brought to us has been important and valuable.
Thank you, Commissioners, and for your consideration on this.
I open this up then for a discussion of the motion at this time. Who would like to go first?
Commissioner Hayes, I have listened to testimony, asked questions, read letters for opening up sales on Sunday and those against, and I'm to a point where I've made up my mind on this issue. I don't have any other questions that I would like to bring up to my fellow commissioners at this time.
Thank you. Mayor Keplish?
Yeah, this is Mayor Keplish. This is a tough problem that we have to consider. We've got the merchants that have presented the effects of a Sunday sale on their business, the adverse effect, the cost, additional cost of operating another day and reduced sales. We've heard from citizens that would like us to open up sales to alcoholic beverages on Sunday, so, you know, it's definitely split with both sides having valid points. It's unusual that we have a situation like this to consider. You know, I, I think it's, it's hard that if we accept the option and open Sunday sales to ask our businesses to suffer loss, and I know the inconvenience we have to our citizens to deny Sunday sales, but, you know, of operating a business for 30 years, I know the profit margins are very hard, and it's in these times that we're looking at economically, I don't feel that I can, can go forward with considering Sunday sales. I feel that, you know, I have to make a decision with the business owners. I totally understand the dilemma that they're in.
May I make a further comment on that?
Sure.
Yeah, Leonard, I understand, and I also had some of the same issues with this, that with the Kansas liquor laws continuing to change, they've already cut into liquor store profits by 20% by opening hard beer available for sale at the grocery stores, Walmart, and convenience stores. And those liquor laws are going to continue to evolve and put additional pressure on the liquor stores, and it's not something that they're looking forward to facing. And I understand the dilemma. If you open the sales up, that would mean, that would not force them to open, but they could determine if they wanted to open, and they could set, modify the hours, the hours in the state that they have to be open, or they, the hours are from noon till 8:00. I know Gillum Liquor Store in Coffeyville has modified their hours on Sunday from 12:00 until 6:00. So, it's something that they could open and see if the revenue was there to warrant them to stay open, and that way they would be able to at least compete with the other vendors in town as concerning the hard beer, which is the liquors, the Walmarts, the grocery stores, and the convenience stores, that, that's all they're going to be able to sell because they don't carry liquor and wine. So, it's something that it, that we're not going to force them. They can modify their hours if they choose to, and if the business is not there, then they can also choose to not be open, but anyway, that's the point I wanted to make, but I understand where you're coming from also.
Well, my perspective on this is one of a broader scope and looking at this in terms of how does a position that we take as a city government impact, impact the perception of a person, a family, a business, looking at independence? And one of the things that I would hope that we would be able to project is that we, we lead, or we are taking a leadership position, or we are not in some way retrograde in our perspective about, about who we are welcoming into our community. Kansas statute allows a maximum number of hours for Sunday liquor sales and has already set that limit. What does the City of Independence or the residents of Independence gain from somehow restricting further trade within our marketplace? And I don't see a particular benefit to restricting those hours, other than the elevation of expenses at the stores, which near-term I would expect that until the marketplace has an opportunity to respond, stores may have some growing pains. But I believe that a market in, in a freer market responds with more economic energy. A freer market then will eventually respond to the availability and begin to take advantage of it. So, at this, at this point, I see this as not only an opportunity to create some small amount of incremental economic expansion, it also demonstrates to newcomers that we are open for business and that we are welcome to their desires, should they wish to shop for these types of products on the days that they're visiting, that they're visiting us, whether they be the weekdays or weekends. Are there any other comments?
This is Mayor, this is Mayor Keplish, and I think that's the problem with an issue such as this, that we've got two sides that have desires, and it's, it's very tough to determine what actually is best, so, you know, I appreciate everyone's input, both citizens and the businesses and commissioners on the, on the subject.
So, I think we're ready for a motion. Do I hear a motion on this?
I move to adopt an ordinance expanding the sale at retail of cereal malt beverage and alcohol liquor on Sundays.
And I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
This is Mayor Keplish, and I vote nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Consider a resolution banning tobacco and vaping in all forms from all city-owned property except for all properties operated and/or managed by Independence Housing Authority, but which are titled to the City of Independence, all businesses located at the Independence Municipal Airport on property titled to the City of Independence, and all city streets and right-of-ways. David, are you speaking to this this evening?
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, and Mayor. First, this started with an effort from the kids, so with your permission, I would like the kids to start, and then I can come up behind and lead where we came with the, with our rest of it. So, with that, sir, if you would allow the kids to speak here first.
Please, as, as you step to the microphone, please introduce yourself and, and make sure that you adjust the microphone to, to your level, since we've had tall people speaking so far.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Marcy Roberts, and I am the Chronic Disease Risk Reduction Coordinator, Grant Coordinator for Montgomery County, and we're so pleased to be here with you tonight. One, two of our main initiatives this year have been the prevention of tobacco use among youth and also promoting tobacco-free parks policies. You have a great group of youth leaders in your community, and also a great teacher who's done a great job with the kids, and they have really helped us move along in, in both of these initiatives. And so, I'd like to hand it over to the Resist Youth at this point, and also Kristy Holly, who is their sponsor.
Thank you. Kristy Holly, JAD-K instructor, Independence High School. I have a great group of students that's worked very hard this year to promote the initiative for anti-vaping, anti-smoking, not only through our school and on school grounds, but as the community as well. The kids went out to the park several different times, and did park scans and picked up tobacco butts and the remnants of vaping and everything, and they counted over 1,000 butts in total on all their trips, and it was just overwhelming to see the amount of trash, and we have such a beautiful park area here, and we're so lucky to have what we have, and these kids are so passionate about keeping what we have beautiful, and when they find something that they're passionate about, they really just sink their teeth into it, and these kids are really, really passionate about keeping everyone's health at number-one priority, second-hand... Secondhand smoke is very dangerous, and just keeping everything clean and beautiful for their children to come. I've got two students with me today, and they would like to just say a few words about some of the things they've done this year, and maybe some of their opinions about their park scans and some things they've been involved in. Okay, thank you.
I can tell the microphone is very tall there. You might want to pull it towards you a little bit.
There you go.
There you go. Welcome.
So throughout the year, we've been doing park scans, as she mentioned, and it is true, we have found several cigarette butts everywhere, and the main places where we have found them have been over by where the young children play in the park, and that's very upsetting because young children like to pick up things they find and usually ingest it. And if young children ingest cigarette butts, there's no telling what could happen. I mean, the scientists might be able to tell, but I personally can't, and that worries me. So personally, I believe it would be better if smoking was not allowed in the park for the safety of the children and for the safety of those with lung issues, and for the elders who do not have the lung capacity anymore to support themselves as well as they would have in their youth.
Thank you.
Hi, I agree with Max completely on this. There is also a risk of secondhand smoke with children inhaling that smoke and also hurting their lungs, pretty much. I also agree with the policy of putting, I also agree with the policy of basically banning the, the smoking and the vaping in these public parks.
Thank you. And what was your name?
My name's Mercedes Kirby.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So I'm very proud of our county. We've made a lot of progress with tobacco-free parks. Should the City of Independence decide to pass the resolution this evening, it would make four cities in our county that have done so, along with Coffeyville, Cherryville, and Kaney. So we're very pleased to be here. There is free signage available through KDHE. Once you pass your policy, you just upload it, and you're able to order free signage. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I think Barb also needs to be recognized because she's been working with the kids to bring this initiative. When this was brought to the city, as city staff became aware of it and they discussed it, we felt the need to not only do the parks, but our city property. And I want you to know that we have, our employees have been aware of it for, since March, I believe. We've tried to put it out to them that what we were going to do, we've already had, I believe at this time I've heard of three people that have stopped smoking on their own, just anticipating that. And I'm going to tell on ourselves a little bit. I had a flat tire on my city vehicle today, so I had the spare on, and it was low, so I pulled around to the front of the fire bay, and a little six-year-old boy came walking across the street. He lives there, and he loves the fire trucks, he loves to watch them and the police cars when they go, lights and sirens out of there, and he came over there and was talking to me. And he, he told me, he said, you know, I picked up 250 butts over in your parking lot. I said, you did? He goes, yeah. He says, I don't know why your guys smoke. Don't they know it's bad for them? And I thought, wow. I mean, a little kid speaking to us, we're the people that are responding on the calls every day, and he walked over and cleaned up our yard with 250 butts. So that just really spoke to, to my heart today. You know, we do set the example, and as these people said, secondhand smoke is a carcinogen, and if we can protect our workers and the public on our properties, we are not banning it from the, as we said, we tried to be considerate, but we feel the public spaces should be smoke-free. We're battling a COVID virus that attacks the lungs now, so everybody needs the capacity and the healthy lungs that they can have till this, we get through this and even going forward. So therefore, that's why we went further than just the parks, to ask for you guys to pass an ordinance banning it from the public, our public property, city-owned property.
Thank you, David. Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Your name, please.
Catherine Skellinger.
Hi.
I don't smoke personally. I think it's disgusting. Is, I have more of a question, I guess. Is this tobacco use, or is it just having cigarettes in your pocket?
It would be use. To carry it would not be a Jeff, right? I mean, it's the use of the products.
Yes, it's, it's defined as the usage of tobacco and vaping products.
And not to start trouble or anything, but all the butts that were picked up, do we not have anti-litter laws?
It, it is in fact littering to throw a cigarette butt on the property. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the, the public? Well, Commissioners, I'll turn this over to you for discussion. Who would like to start?
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Jeff, the smoking was, has already been prohibited in city buildings. Is that correct, city facilities?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so this would be strictly public areas that are outside, and to reiterate here, this, this is not banning, you can, okay, let me read this back here, make sure everybody understands. It's just all city-owned property, and the exceptions were all city streets and right-of-ways because I saw a comment where people were saying that they were, we were banning, the resolution was going to ban smoking on city streets.
Right.
And right-of-way, and that is not.
Correct.
The case. So whoever started that, you're wrong. And Dean's already alluded to the other two exceptions in here that he addressed earlier, but I wanted to make sure I made that number three, all city streets and right-of-way point at this meeting, so there would be no misunderstanding among the public.
That is correct, Commissioner. It really affects our employees more, I mean, you're correct. The law already says people cannot smoke in our public buildings. So this really affects our employees more than the public, other than if you have an event on the property here, you wouldn't be able to smoke, you'd have to go to the right-of-way or across the street. But it's more, it more affects our, our employees. That's why we tried to get it out to them back in March, and Kelly's done a very good job at the airport, making sure it's just protecting the rights of those people.
Now, David, just for clarification, some of the more utilized city properties are some of the Independence Rec Commission-type properties. This, this covers those properties as well, am I right?
Yes, we had, I believe Kelly can speak to a unanimous from them that they wanted their property smoke-free. So it does include the rec. The only exceptions of the city is the housing authority because they manage, it's under HUD and some different things, but rec does want their property smoke-free.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern of, of smoke and secondhand smoke, but in, in this case, we're looking at the right of choice. When we ban smoking, then we also affect, of course, the ones that are smoking to provide a benefit to those that prefer not to, but we're in open areas that smoke dissipates, and it's not the concentration that we see in a building around a door. I guess, I understand, I applaud the action of the group in getting the message out to stop smoking, but I have a problem with setting an ordinance that we respond to one group and have no input from another group, the smokers. When we, we address the smoking issue and the effects of it on people's health, we aren't acknowledging, though, the problem of alcoholism and the effect that it has on families, people, innocent people, when we sponsor a zubaru in the park too. So, you know, and this is strictly my opinion, which all of us have, why are we going to sponsor one activity that causes health issues, but now we're going to ban another product that causes health issues? If we're concerned about health, then why aren't we banning both?
Can I make a point of clarification? What's before you is actually a resolution, not an ordinance. The distinction is, in ordinance, if you violate it, you could be cited into city court. A resolution, you cannot. So it's more of a statement of policy. We do have some other ordinances that ban smoking in certain areas of the city. Those are ordinances, and, and if a person ran afoul of those, you could be cited. But the, you know, you can change this to an ordinance and make it a citable offense. I think I spoke to Marcy a long time ago about this, and we talked about resolutions versus ordinances, and her suggestion, and I think I agreed with her, was the first step might be to do a resolution to see how it flies, and then you can go from there, you could rescind it, you could toughen it up, you can do whatever. But just make it clear, this is a resolution, not an ordinance.
So then if, if this is just a resolution, I guess that was one of the understandings I overlooked, that it is a resolution, not an ordinance, so then how enforceable would it? It's a recommendation that somebody is smoking on the playground, somebody could come up and make a request for them to quit, but there's no action that can be taken to force them to. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. Okay, so we won't be looking at a fine, it's just, it's a resolution that, in my notes, I forgot, it is just a resolution?
So once, this is Commissioner Ucici. Once again, it's, it's just a recommendation, it's not enforceable. We hope that people will take into consideration, especially if they're young children and, and people around, to be courteous if they do have to smoke. But my other concern is the people that do smoke, it's, it's very hard to quit. I've known a few people that were able to quit cold turkey. It's very addictive, and it's very hard. And I would, I would hate to see a burden placed on as far as, some places have, have indicated, if you were so many feet away from, like a playground or something, you could smoke, a designated area where people could at least go smoke, and that would give them the ability to remove themselves from a play area or something, because for some people, it may be just impossible to quit smoking. They've been smoking for so many years, it is probably just not going to happen. So, I mean, I can see the merits of this, but I also don't want to hang people out there to, to dry by making it to where they, they don't have at least a designated area, designated somewhere to where they could at least go and not feel like they were being ostracized or looked at differently because of that.
Right. This is Marcy Roberts again, and you're right, many cities, all the, all the cities in Montgomery County have passed resolutions, policies. They are largely self-enforcing, but the good news is, is 83% of Kansans don't smoke. So, I mean, we have found that most people want to do the right thing, you know, and with proper promotion within the city, with, with their city workers and a little guidance on how to, how to approach someone who might be smoking, you know, in a non-confrontational way. You know, we would simply inform them that we have recently passed a tobacco-free parks and outdoor recreational spaces policy, and we ask that you not smoke while you're here. And then, like, the city recreation would announce before all the ballgames, they would inform all their workers in the concession stands. So it becomes a new social norm, basically. And when, and it's such an important thing, because when people come into town, and, and the signs as well, they, they have young lungs at play, please do not smoke, vape, or use tobacco, and that includes chew. So, you know, we ask you not to use these products while you're here, and it also has the can quit number underneath it for the state of Kansas. So, I mean, it's not a confrontational sign, it's, it's just the city saying, this is something we value, and we would like for you to value it as well.
Commissioner Hayes or Vice Mayor?
I would also say the city's doing an initiative to assist our employees. We're going to be working closely with Rita, Blue Cross Blue Shield, to assist those employees that wish to stop. We've also made it clear to our employees that they will have a place if they wish to continue smoking, that they can go smoke. So we, we're looking at all sides, but I will again reiterate, we've had absolutely no contact from employees with a concern since March when we announced it.
Any other comments? Rita?
Yes. My name's Rita Ordolani. I'm, work with Marcy on the Montgomery County Wellness Coalition, as well as I am an employee of Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas. I've worked closely with Kelly, David, and Lacey, and I can tell you, they have done an excellent job of promoting wellness at the City of Independence. We've had nurses come down from Topeka to work with them, and we've got several programs in the works for the City of Independence employees. Because they are a non-grandfathered health plan, there are nicotine patches, nicotine gum, there's some medication that they can take if they wish to quit using tobacco, and all of those would be at no cost to the employee. So we're continuing to work with them, but to Leonard's point on the alcohol, the three detriments to health is physical inactivity, smoking or tobacco use, and poor nutrition. So alcohol is not mentioned on there, but those other three are the conditions that lead to the four chronic health conditions that we see. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Rita. Mayor Keplish, go ahead, please.
This is Mayor Keplish. I like the idea of posting signs requesting no smoking in the areas and a reminder to the public to be cautious and considerate of others in the area. I think that's a, a good start. You know, I guess. You know, I guess my question that I'm dealing with is a resolution, taking it that far. But, you know, the signage advising the public to be considerate and to restrict their smoking is an excellent idea.
I would like to make one other comment, too.
Go ahead.
The facility where I worked at had banned smoking on the premise, or inside the building, many years ago. But they did have an area that was designated for workers that were unable to stop smoking. And they did have some type of a container or something out on the grounds to where they could put the cigarette butts in, and that's how they policed the area. But I'm in agreement more with Mayor Kaplisch about encouraging the signs as a good starting point. I don't want to... I think that's a good place to start. I would hate to see us move any further down the line to see what this looks like, see what kind of cooperation we get. If we have these physical receptacles out there to where cigarette butts can be placed at, if we can get people to do that, maybe that would be a good starting place and to see how this pans out over time. So that would be my thoughts on this also.
Well, my comment goes back to what restriction actually are we asking for here? And it is, in many ways, restricted. It's restricted to only city-owned property. It's restricted to those places where we post the signs, effectively. Just guessing, the city's property does not exceed 10% of the city's square miles. So that leaves, just as an estimate, 90% of the city where a smoker can find an opportunity. This is not as restrictive as you might think, but it is basically a step in the direction of protecting children from secondhand smoke. And even a small step in that direction is a good one. So I applaud the students' resist in high school, and we are... We need more people with this type of intensity out there, you know, working for a good cause. So I appreciate your input. I'm in favor of the resolution. I think it's about time. We are, once again, looks like we're trailing the rest of the county, and for what reason, I don't know. So I've always applauded the workplaces that I've been at that have been very staunch in their advocacy for to stop smoking, and for those people who do smoke, to offer them smoking cessation opportunities. That's also the right thing to do, and I know the city is going to be offering that. So I would support this resolution.
Mayor Kaplisch, do you have any other further comments?
I have no further comments.
Okay, I'm good.
Do I have a motion, then?
I make a motion. I move that a resolution be adopted banning tobacco and vaping in all forms on city-owned property with exceptions as noted in the resolution. And Jeff, should I go over those exceptions again, or is that not necessary?
You don't have to read the entire resolution.
Okay. The three exceptions?
Yeah.
Okay. The three exceptions are: all properties operated and/or managed by the Independence Housing Authority but which are titled to the City of Independence; all businesses located at the Independence Municipal Airport on property titled to the City of Independence; and all city streets and right-of-way.
I will second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
This is Mayor Kaplisch. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for being here this evening. The next item is consider authorizing applying for a grant to replace the Cherry Street Bridge under KDOT's off-system bridge program.
Mike Passour, Director of Public Works. City has opportunity to apply for a grant to replace the Cherry Street Bridge. A little history about the bridge. It's located about a block west of South 19th. It was built in 1930, and it's been de-rated to 10-ton weight limit for quite a few years now. There is an industry close by that cannot utilize that bridge because of the weight rating. And in contrast, there's three bridges within the city that we take care of. And Laurel Street Bridge was replaced in '95, and Maple Street Bridge was replaced in 2005. And they, I think, tried for a grant in 2011, and did not get that. So this will be the last of the three to get replaced if we apply for the grant and happen to get it. What's the split on that?
The grant is 80% KDOT of eligible costs, which the costs that aren't eligible is design. The inspection for engineering is eligible. So based on the estimates we've done, there's a breakout in the slide, but it's $307,000, roughly, KDOT, $111,000 city. Every two years, the city is required by KDOT to inspect their bridges and re-rate their bridges. This, and they're rated 1 to 100 on sufficiency. This bridge is rated at 38. And to qualify for this program, you have to be below 50. So it's the only bridge in town that would qualify for this program.
Does the design... I'm sorry. Were you done, Mike? Okay. Does the design that you're demonstrating the cost for here, does this design solve for the weight issue that you were referring to? Does it increase the tons of capacity?
Yes, it would make it basically an HS20 loading, so there would not be any posting on it. If the vehicle is legal to drive on the highway, it can cross that bridge.
And the second question I have is then, will it also increase the volume of water that can pass through the bridge location such that it would not be an impedance to the floodwaters that do occasionally come through there?
Correct. We basically, in this estimate, upsized the bridge somewhat due to the problems with Whiskey Creek and included some channel modifications 100 feet in each direction, which we believe KDOT will also participate in those costs. So yes, it does increase the hydraulic capacity of the bridge.
Other Commissioner questions? Commissioner Yussusi?
I think I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Mayor Kaplisch?
Yes, this is Mayor Kaplisch. Sean, on the channel work, would that be clearing? It looks like, from the photograph that was in our packet, that the bridge is located right at a sharp bend in the creek. So are you saying that the work would include modification to allow the water to navigate the bend a little better?
That's correct. From our experience, we believe KDOT will allow us to do some channel modifications for that reason, which would help with hydraulic capacity of the structure. That's exactly right. 100 feet in each direction is generally acceptable to KDOT. And we may be able to go a little farther than that on the south end, but in general, that's what we've estimated.
Okay. And that is on a gravel street?
Correct.
Is it on... So would the project include a concrete approach on each side to transition?
That's correct.
Prevent erosion?
That is correct. KDOT will require an approach slab to the structure. The structure will likely be a large double box culvert, 15 feet at least in width, so basically 30 feet, plus an approach slab on each end. And those would be required by KDOT.
Okay. Did I hear you say that it would be box culverts?
Yes.
For the bridge?
That's what we're proposing. It's getting to the length that a short haunch slab might be more cost-effective, so we base the estimate on the box culvert, but we could end up with a very short haunch slab bridge, which is another type of structures.
I think that's the only question. Do you know one more? When it floods, is that bridge underwater currently?
I have seen it overtop that bridge, yes.
So how does the new bridge, would it be at the same elevation, or would you propose adjusting the height?
That's something that we can work with, with the city. KDOT would not require us to raise it, but it's a possibility to raise it. We want to make sure... The problem you get into when you start raising the surface of the road is you have to put fill in the flood plain so there's a point when it becomes counterproductive to start raising it. So we can certainly look at all that when we do our... If you receive the grant and you do a more... We get into a detailed design, we can look and see how much we can raise it without it becoming an impedance to the 100-year event.
What I was wondering is floodwater runs across the surface. What kind of damage that gives to the roadway? I noticed in 2007, when the water breached 160 east of town, that there was severe erosion right on the shoulder, and the pavement area was, you know, the adjacent ground was compromised. I didn't know how that would affect the bridge.
Yeah, the 2007 flood was pretty extreme, as you know. It was generally categorized as a 500-year event. So you would definitely damage the road, really, regardless of what we do. KDOT would not allow us to design for that event. But it would damage the road, but it would not damage the structure. So in this instance, and that's generally what happens in an extreme event. The bridges are designed to be overtopped, but the roadway would suffer some damage. What I've seen there is maybe a foot over the bridge now. So I would suspect we can raise the surface of the bridge at least that much, but if we get an event where it goes over that gravel road, there's probably going to be some erosion just because it's a gravel road. But I don't... The bridge would be protected, so...
Okay. Yeah, with the gravel road, that's impossible to protect, but that part of town floods a lot more often than it did on East Main. And we just want to make sure that our new approach and the bridge pavement itself is protected from damage and the repeated flooding that occurs down there. Just want to make sure we got that covered in our grant. That's the only questions I have.
Commissioner Yussusi, any more questions?
I'm good. Commissioner Hayes?
Thank you. Do I have a motion, then?
I make a motion, move to authorize applying for a grant to replace the Cherry Street Bridge under KDOT off-system bridge program.
I second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 This is Mayor Kaplisch. Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is consider options for modifications to the filter building as part of Phase 2 of the Water Treatment Plant project.
Is there an honorable PC here? Terry Lightfoot, my phone.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Hi, Sarah.
Nice to see you. I don't know if Terry wanted to start, or if you just want me to go ahead and dive into
Which is the correct order here? Should Terry speak?
Okay.
Sarah, please proceed.
All right. So as you know, we're in the Phase 2 project at the Water Treatment Plant. Our first phase included all of the work to upgrade the electrical system, and that's done and in process. So we're now moving on to the design of Phase 2. Our original contract included some modifications to the existing filter building, and that's the main building right there when you first come in, that includes the operational offices and laboratory and restroom facilities for the plant as well. The original contract and scope of work that we have right now involved working within the existing footprint of the building. And we started down that road and then had some discussion with city staff, and were asked to kind of take a look back and see what it might look like to go ahead and put an addition on the front of the building. And so the memo that you have in your packet is what we put together as a comparison of these two options. So when we did the original preliminary engineering report, which was for the SRLF loan that you have for the Water Treatment Plant, we did that back in 2017. And at that point in time, we looked at two different options that both added space onto the existing buildings. So that was an addition to the building in the PER. But then, like I said, our original, our contract right now for Phase 2 includes using within the existing footprint. So what this memo does is it shows you what those two options were that were presented in the original preliminary engineering report. And like I said, both of those added space on and square footage onto the front of the building. And you can see both of those there. The first one, both of them had a little bit different interior configuration with the restrooms and locker room. But the big difference between the two, when we were looking at them at that time, is the entranceway. Option 1 in the original PER just had, basically similar to what the existing entrance is, whereas option 2, the layout included an ADA-compliant ramp into the facility. Since that time, we've dug in deeper because we're into the design phase of things now and have found out that the ADA-compliant entrance will be required, as well as any area inside the building that we touch with our work will be required to be ADA-compliant. So that includes the restrooms, the locker rooms, doorways, and hardware on those doors as well. So what this memo does then is show you, kind of compare the two different options. If you go to what is considered Figure 3, there we go. This is what it would look like if we were to work within the existing footprint of the building. And basically what that does, you can see this, the office space that is currently at the front ends up moving to the back. And what that does is that takes over an existing chlorine room for space and bumps that wall out just a little bit to be able to accommodate an office space. So with this option, what we would need to do is move the chlorine equipment out of that room and into a new building to the east in what's now kind of the existing parking lot area. And that is what our contract was written around, and that's what our original scope was to do, was to move that equipment out into a new structure. And so that is all already included in what we were planning to do. Again, the ADA ramp would be required, so that's why you see that in this option as well. The other option that we were asked to look at was what would it look like if we had an addition to the front of the building, and basically comparing kind of the pros and cons and costs of that to this option of working within the existing footprint. Really, the difference becomes, obviously, we have to move that equipment out. It was something we were planning on originally anyway. But the difference is, if you add the addition on, it gives you a little more flexibility in the space. It keeps the office and the personnel up front, as opposed to moving the office space to the back of the building, you know? And really, just that there is limited space within the existing footprint, so we only have so much we can work with. the existing footprint, so we only have so much we can work with. We do note there, you can see that we moved that wall of the chlorine room back just a little bit to be able to accommodate office space, but that's really about as far back into the existing structure as we can go in the process area. We can't take up any more space in that process area, so this is the area that we would have to work with. Cost differences is noted in the memo. Working within the existing space is an estimate of about two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and that includes the cost to move that equipment out and construct a new building for just the chlorine feed equipment. The cost estimate that we have for the addition to the building is approximately two hundred and sixty thousand to two hundred and ninety thousand, and that also includes the fact that we're going to have to relocate some existing utilities that come out the front of that building. So where that addition sits, and where as well that, where that ramp sits, there are several utilities that come in and out of that area. Looking at the existing plans, what we note is a building drain line, the building sanitary sewer, the building water service, and potentially the sixteen-inch finished water pipeline that comes through there as well. We wouldn't know exactly what all we would need to move until we were able to get in there and kind of make sure we knew exactly where things were and what depth they were, but those are potential things that would need to be relocated if there was an addition on to the building. So that's why we wanted to make sure and account for that in any sort of estimates that we were providing. So I think the memo that was provided in the packet from the city, from Terry, had recommended option two, which Terry, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that is working within the existing footprint. Is that correct?
Would you, Terry, you've got a question here. Would you repeat your question for Terry, please?
Certainly. Terry, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the request for action that was in the packet, that when you recommended option two modifications, that was working within the existing footprint. Is that correct?
Yes, I, I'm looking at option two to give us the flexibility of being able to get people in that building that, that may be handicapped or have issues. Also, I have a huge concern with moving the chlorine feed equipment and continuing operations, the timing and phasing of that, and being able to stay in production of water. I just foresee issues coming up there that, that could affect our ability to feed water to the city. And if we could avoid that, I, I would like to.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing, when you say option two, you mean the option two?
When somebody speaks on the microphone, could they move closer? There's quite an echo in the room, and it, and it feeds back, and it's really hard to hear on the phone. So if the microphone could maybe get closer to the speaker, or make it move closer to it, it would really make it easier for us to understand.
We'll make what adjustments we can, Leonard. Please, what, I don't know how to go back, I don't want to go all the way back to the beginning of your presentation, so can we pick it up with what Terry, did you hear what Terry said?
Yeah, I can hear, we can hear excellent what is said on the phone. It's in the room, we get the echo, and I got enough. I don't think we have to have Sarah repeat what she said, but if, if just as we continue on, could move closer to the microphone, it would really help listening in on, on telephone or on Facebook.
Okay, we'll try it, we'll, we'll try it for a minute longer, and then I'll, I'll check to see whether we've got any improvement. Sarah, try, try getting as close as you can to the microphone.
Okay. Is that better, Leonard?
Oh, much better. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go back and make sure I understand what Terry was talking about. So Terry is recommending option two, which is to have an addition onto the front of the building with the ADA accessible ramp. Is that correct, Terry?
Yes.
Okay. So what questions can I answer about the two options, or where we got to, or what can I answer?
A question, not a question that I have, but I just want to reinforce something that was mentioned earlier. As far as separating the, the chlorine out from the existing building, that was going to be mandated anyway. Is that correct?
It was not mandated. When we put together this original scope of work, that was what we had put, that's what we had indicated, is that we were going to try and move the chlorine into a new building. We'd been looking at it, the original thought was to move the chlorine cylinders. If you've been out at the dock, they're huge, you know, ton cylinders that sit out there, and our original thought was to be able to move all of that off of, you know, and put it into a separate building. And that was kind of based on our discussions from, like I said, way back when in 2017. We've been looking at it, and actually, we have a way we can leave them on the dock, but the chlorine feed equipment would have to be in a separate building if we're not going to leave it in, in the existing space. There's not a way to move it out onto the dock. We'd have to put that in a separate building. So if we are to put an addition onto the front of the building, we don't have to do anything with the chlorine feed equipment. You know, we could definitely work around things during construction to make sure nothing was, was interrupted, but I certainly understand Terry's concern. There's always, you know, that possibility there, so working, you know, leaving that where it is and just adding on to the front of the building for the additional space certainly removes any possibility of, of a disruption.
All right, Sarah, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And would you run over those, I'm looking for those costs of option two, again, please.
Certainly. So the option that we're looking at here then, with an addition to the front of the building and the ADA accessible ramp, and this cost does include any of the other ADA modifications that would be required, you know, in the new spaces that we're creating, and the estimate is two hundred and sixty to two hundred and ninety thousand. And that does include, as we put into the memo, approximately thirty-five thousand dollars of an estimate for what we might need to move utilities. We won't know exactly what that looks like until we get closer into that. It wasn't an area that we needed to dig into before, so we'll need to look into that a little deeper and see if we in fact need to move some utilities, or if they're deep enough, we don't need to worry about it.
All right, Sarah, thank you.
Sarah, one question, and that is that in one of the earlier design options, the, I believe the building to house the chlorine was going to displace the parked cars in the east side, and because of this particular option here, you do not need to add parking lot space. Am I correct?
Actually, what we've been talking about is going ahead and doing the parking on the west side, and the reason for that is that there is not a good way, if you notice how things have to be laid out to be able to have that ADA accessible ramp, there's not a good way to get there from the east side parking lot and be able to still access that space. So we would still propose to go ahead and put some form of a parking lot on the other side of the building to make good use of that accessible ramp.
So you're saying that the setback of the building with the addition onto the south side doesn't accommodate the, a sidewalk that would go along that side as well?
It could potentially. We've had the discussions with city staff about going ahead and doing the parking lot anyway, so I suppose if that's something you guys want to discuss further, we certainly can.
I just thought we'd saved that fifty thousand dollars, so, sorry.
No, no, and, and it's something that, you know, we, we will look at as we go through design. We're certainly not going to make the parking lot any bigger than it needs to be to accommodate what needs to be accommodated. And the other thing is, I believe once you have that, we do have to put in a certain number of ADA spaces, and so I don't know that we can do that on the east side. That might be more of the issue.
Yeah, I had not considered that, because requirements for ADA on the exterior of the building aren't part of this drawing.
Correct, correct. They are not, but they will be when we get to the design of what's necessary to get into the building.
Okay. Mayor Kaplish?
Yes, this is Mayor Kaplish. Sarah, why is there not a shower in the women's bathroom or restroom?
And this was an initial layout done by the architect. We haven't finalized any of this yet. This was the preliminary plan that we've come up with, so those kinds of things will be worked through in final design, and if that's something that the city feels is necessary, we can do that. I think the initial intent was to have one shower facility that could be utilized by anyone that needed to use it, but having it in the men's restroom because that was most prevalent for staff. But again, that's something we will look through as we finalize the design and the floor plan.
So are they going to be designated unisex bathrooms, or is it, if you have the one with the shower designated men, then if you have women employees, they're being denied that benefit also. So you're, you're saying what we got is not really the final preliminary. It's just a concept you want us to see to choose the direction forward?
Correct. This is the first concept plan that the architect has come up with to start as an initial design concept to talk about. So we kind of came up with this concept and then stopped as we were looking at the different building options. So once we have the direction on which way we want to go with the building, then we can go through and talk about all those things and finalize that layout.
Yeah, it seems like if, if we hire women techs and we're providing men a shower, that we're going to be required to have women showers also. We can't arbitrarily provide one and not the other.
Certainly.
The next question is the ramp. Are there utilities or pipes for the filters located adjacent to the south wall that requires the ramp to be offset from the building that far?
There are utilities that come in and out of the building in that area where the addition is, as well as where the ramp is located. Again, we haven't done any sort of potholing or anything yet to figure out the depth and the exact location of those utilities, but that will be part of the next steps that we will do if you, if the commission approves moving forward with the building addition. So I can't exactly answer that yet, but as soon as we get in and have a chance to verify all those utilities, then we can make that determination.
The ramp located that far from the building creates a maintenance issue for the city, and also then an area for watered upon to stagnate. The grass isn't going to grow. It'd be better to put the ramp adjacent to the south wall, offset the distance required for the ramp at the south face of the pillars, and have a landing adjacent to the west wall of the locker room, so that you, when you reach the top, you have to turn south on a landing to get to the main entrance into the building. But that's going to create, the way it's laid out now, it's going to create a, an issue that's going to be detrimental for the city to maintain and operate.
Yeah, we will certainly.
So the whole ramp should be based off of the south wall if possible.
Yes, once we have the final direction on the building, we will look at all those things to make sure that we make it what we need to for ADA requirements, but also make it as maintenance-friendly as possible.
Yeah, it, it's possible, and it would comply with ADA. It doesn't need to sit off the building that far, unless there's some large pipes that would prevent it too, but you could do everything that you've got now, just move it six feet up and have your, your distance for the width of the ramp based on the south face of the pilasters, and then provide another five-foot minimum walkway, a landing at the top that's, that you, when you reach the top of the, the ramp, you turn south to the landing. You're going to have to extend the, the landing for the steps west by the width of your, your upper landing. But it would eliminate that hole through trash, grass, water to accumulate.
Other, other questions? Mayor Kaplish?
Those were the only things, you know, I was concerned with not providing equal opportunity for the women. That if we provide a shower in the men, that we should provide one in the women, and if the men, if the women don't need a shower, then the men don't need a shower. And then the, the spacing for the ramp to eliminate that gap between the building and the ramp. Those were it. It looks like a, an improvement for the, the staff at the water treatment plant, a hundred percent.
To tell you the truth, the question of unisex bathrooms did cross my mind earlier as I was looking at the, you know, them being marked for one sex or the other, and I would think that in, in more modern buildings, that just creates underutilized space. So you get a lot more utility out of just making multiple unisex bathrooms.
This is Mayor Kaplish, and since the building currently is utilized by all men, it does give the, the use of the space that you're not eating up space for a shower that's not being used. In a lot of cases I've seen in maintenance buildings where showers are provided, that they end up becoming a catch-all for storage items, that they're not utilized at all, or they're utilized so infrequently, they accumulate debris. So as you're saying, Vice Mayor Dean, that unisex would be a way to solve the problem possibly without redesigning the space.
Indeed. Mayor Yoususi?
Good point.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I have no further.
And this is Mayor Kaplish. I have no further questions.
Then do I have a motion?
I make a motion. I move to approve option two modifications to the filter building as part of Phase Two of the Water Treatment Plant Project.
I second that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 This is Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Option or item E, consider setting the date of September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty on, at five-thirty PM for condemnation of the following ten structures as dangerous and unsafe. David, would you walk us through those ten addresses?
Yes, sir. These, again, are part of our building effort of unsound pop, unsound property in the City of Independence. We have three-twenty-one South Nineteenth, Unoccupied Residence, four-oh-nine, all of these are unoccupied, South Seventeenth, four-sixteen South Eighteenth, five-oh-nine North Fourteenth, seven-oh-eight South Sixteenth, eight-thirteen South Eighteenth, eleven-oh-one and eleven-oh-five West Main, twelve-seventeen North Ninth, and the trailer park at fifteen-twenty-nine West Laurel. It would be our recommendation that we set these for public hearing in September as, to consider condemnation as unsafe, dangerous and unsafe. And I do not know if anybody's present or not, sir.
Are there any residents or citizens here that would like to speak to any of these properties at this time? And David, you did say that each of these properties is currently vacant?
Yes, they are unoccupied. And we-
I saw a for-sale sign this, this, on twelve-seventeen North Ninth Street. Is that something of, that, that's not really for our concern, is it?
I can tell you- I can tell you, Vice Mayor Hayes, that these properties are selling. Lacy and I, I just forwarded Lacy and April an email I received from one of the guy that owns multiple properties that are in the process, and he's trading, selling. So they're moving hands all the time and it's hard for us to track.
I see. Nonetheless, the condition of these properties continues to deteriorate.
Right.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Dave, were these identified by Montgomery County?
Yes, this is part of that.
Unsafe, that percentage of that property?
Unsound properties that April, Lacy and I worked through and came up with for this year's project.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Mayor Kaplish. When I was looking at the list of properties and then also in the RCA, the note about an additional 32 residents we will be considering and what we have looked at so far this year, I visited with David and Kelly, that what appeared to me was that I had no idea how much money we were talking to condemn these houses in abatement and demolition costs, or how much we had spent so far of our budget doing this. And as we look forward, I just looked at the additional 32 and figured if we had $4,000 demolition cost, we're looking at $160,000 there. We've budgeted, I think about $100,000. And as David and I were visiting about it, mentioned about some encumbered funds that we had for it, and Kelly had prepared us that list. I apologize, I haven't been around a printer and my, I didn't have internet access today to be able to really read the information that was sent. But I thought, in visiting with them, that as we continue to look at this, that as we have these houses come up, if we have the projected abatement cost and demolition cost, so we could kind of keep track and know where we are in the process of using our funds for it. And then we would know how this is going to project. Is it going to carry over into 2021? Or are we talking about all of them being able to be dealt with in 2020? And particularly when we look at the condemnation of the mobile home park, we've got utilities that are throughout that park. Normally, when a house is razed, you want the service line with the sewer capped and all the other utilities are cut out at the service. But when you look at a park that size, you really can't cap just each individual mobile home. It needs to be capped at the sewer tap if it is all connected to a main. But anyway, we need to look at how we can track our money better to know where we are. And as the uncertainty of economics come up as we progress through the COVID situation, we'd have better idea on when we have to put a hold to pull money from our condemnation into operation of the city. I think our primary concern, as Kelly and I visited, is to maintain the funds, to keep all of our employees hired. We don't want to lay off anyone. So that might be reducing the number of condemnations we address, might cut back on capital projects. But that was the start of the information that Kelly sent out to us this afternoon was a method that we can look at and how to track the projects going forward. And, you know, as we get the next list, we have our budget looked at at that time. So, you know, for example, when we look at these 10 structures, we'd be looking at a dollar amount for abatement and also raising the property.
And you also want- You also might want to keep in mind that some of these funds are also from the Housing Authority that are matched. So some of these funds that are in this calculation are coming from that source.
I, this is Lacy Leece. I might also mention that condemning a structure has no monetary commitment involved with it. You're merely setting a timeline for either repair or eventual removal of the house. So you can condemn it now and not take it out for a year or two years. I mean, we've had houses condemned and on our condemnation list, ready to take out for years. All you're doing is setting a timeline for repair. Even some of the houses that we potentially could bring, they're not in our plan this year, but for example, in future years, we could bring houses that are on the verge of being uninhabitable homes that we set the condemnation procedure up so that they have a timeline to make repairs. Because, you know, in a perfect situation, our ultimate goal is not just to remove homes, it's to improve the housing stock in our community. So the goal would be to set a timeline for homes to be repaired and then the alternative is taken out. So there is no monetary commitment whatsoever by condemning a structure.
This is Mayor Kaplish. Yes, that's true. We are setting and it does take time. But there's no reason why we shouldn't know at this time how much it's going to cost to tear down a house or a group of 10 houses. We still need to know, you know, I don't know when we ever blindly go ahead without consideration of cost, other than that's the way we've always done it.
On average, it's $5,000 a structure.
Yeah, some of them are, some of them won't make it because people will either step up and remove the house on their own or other circumstances will occur. It might take us two years to get through the process. But we need to know how much we're talking about spending at this time, not later.
Mayor, you have a very good point, and I apologize. It should be a part of my RCA. Not only a reason, Lacy's a part of my team for just the help on helping me go through these houses, but she brings a financial aspect to me. She tells me what we can or can't do and what funds were available. So as we sat down and went, found the unsound houses this year, it was based on Lacy's integral part being there telling me what funds we had and what we could do. The other thing I can tell you over the last month, and I think April will probably tell this, we have a lot of activity going on. Some of these houses that are currently condemned, 1020 West Myrtle, I was contacted yesterday. It's up for a hearing in August. Somebody's going to purchase it and they want to get on a timeline. So I'm seeing this with quite a few of these houses we have going on. So, and I think that's ultimately what we want, is our housing stock improved. But it's probably part of my fault, Mayor. I should have put that in the RCA so that you are, you guys are aware that we are financially tracking what we're doing and where we're going.
And I think that what the mayor is saying is that once we start the condemnation process, there is the risk that we're assuming that we will demolish the house at some point in time at some percentage of probability. So even if we could get an estimate of this package saying this is our, this is the risk we're assuming by condemning these properties, that would be better than no value at all.
Yeah, and we can do that. I sent to Kelly this afternoon, based on the last 10 houses we took out, I think the average was 5,000?
The average is 5,000, and that's pretty consistent over the last couple of years, I think. You know, there are a lot of factors, even how many houses you bid at one time is a factor. So I think, I think $5,000 a structure is a good estimate.
And then you can throw in, if there's anything exceptional, you can throw that in on top of that.
Yeah.
Mayor Kaplish?
I hope it's not misunderstood. I wasn't criticizing what was presented tonight. I'm just bringing it out for us to consider going forward. I know that we've always done it this way, but I think what we're facing is a different future financially. And, you know, looking at some of the reports, what other cities are considering and facing with their budgets and the universities and industry, that it just came to my mind that, hey, you know, why don't I know? Why haven't I asked? You know, because I think it's as much the commissioners that we need to know and it's our place to ask you. And you've been providing us what we asked for up to this time. And I think we've not had issues that we're facing now. And, you know, maybe my comments came off as criticism, but it wasn't at all. You know, I know you have done all you can to keep these moving forward and done a great job. It's just looking at where we're going to end up a year from now. And it should be the commissioner's responsibility to know what we're doing. If somebody asks, how much are you spending? You know, and if we don't ask you, then how do you know what to give us? So that's kind of, this was kind of a request going forward that we need to look at how we're going to spend. And that was it.
And that makes sense. And just to echo something Kelly said a few minutes ago, that only half of these funds are city funds.
And this is Mayor Kaplish. And that means, see, that we need to know if we have to cut our 50,000 matching funds, then we don't get the other 50 either.
Very good. Commissioner Yasusi?
Yeah, I've always been asked this question by the public, and I've just given them a rough estimate. $100,000 being 50,000 funded by the city and $50,000 funded by the Independence Housing Authority. I just told them right off the top of my head, the cost ran anywhere from 4,500 to $5,000, give or take. So you're looking at $100,000, you might end up demoing 20 houses. Probably not any more than that, maybe a little less than that. But I've been asked by many people in the public, what do they typically run to demolish? And how many do you demolish if you're looking at $100,000 spent? So.
And the annual report includes how many are demolished too.
Right.
Any other commissioner comments?
I'm good.
This is Mayor Kaplish. I'm good.
Therefore, it's my understanding that we will need an individual motion for each of these properties to schedule that hearing. Is that correct? Or can we make the motion and include all 10 property descriptions in the one motion?
I think when it comes to just motions, you can combine them. But when it comes to resolutions condemning them, they need to be separate resolutions.
So scheduling the hearing, they can be in a single motion?
This is just, it's not a resolution, is it, Kelly?
They're adopting a resolution setting the hearing date.
So it is a resolution?
Yes.
Then it does need to be separate, yeah.
Each one? Okay.
Let's start with number one.
Okay, number one. I make a motion to move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearings to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 321 South 19th Street.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Number two?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearing to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 409 South 17th Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Item number three. I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 416 South 18th Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Motion carries. Number four?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearings to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 509 North 14th Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Motion carries. Number five?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearings to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 708 South 16th Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Motion carries. Number six?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearings to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 813 South 18th Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Motion carries. Number seven?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearings to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 1101 West Main Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Motion carries. Number eight?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearing to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 1105 West Main Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Number nine?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 1217 North 9th Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Motion carries. Number 10?
I move to set the date of September 24, 2020 at 5:30 PM for public hearing to consider condemnation of the falling structure as dangerous and unsafe. 1529 West Laurel Street.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item for commission and action is to consider an ordinance modifying the National Electric Code as previously adopted.
Vice Mayor Hayes, I went back to the electrical board with a couple of questions that the commission had. And to clarify those questions, one was the distance from the meter to the disconnect to the breaker panel. If a breaker panel is 10 feet from the meter base, greater than 10 feet, it requires a disconnect. When that disconnect is required, the 10-feet rule is between the meter base and the disconnect. Once that 10 feet is met, the distance from the disconnect to the breaker, there is no set rule. Once that ten feet is met, the distance from the disconnect to the breaker, there is no set rule. It's ten foot from the meter to the disconnect is what the rule is. If a residence is just doing an upgrade and it is under ten feet, we are not requiring them at this time to put in a disconnect. And the, if that answers your question, then on the last one, we removed where it went back to the Electrical Board because that wasn't correct. So it's just my authority to give a forty-five day extension if somebody's having financial difficulties, and we can authorize a temporary service while they work out their payments.
Commissioner, questions or comments?
This is Mayor Kaplish. I think that clarifies what the intent was. That, I think the assumption normally is if you've got the meter, the disconnect switch is set adjacent to the meter base. But, and then the distance to the panel. What the Electrical Board is allowing now is up to ten feet between the, the meter and the disconnect, and then no determination from the disconnect to the panel board. So it'll give the, for existing construction, a lot more flexibility on locating the disconnect switch with wall space or any other obstructions that might restrict that. So, appreciate the Electric Board clarifying it.
No, I agree with your point, Mayor Kaplish. On a lot of those old buildings, when, there's no room to add any particular type of equipment when you're upgrading meter base.
Yep.
Because those sizes change, and you just don't have the room, so.
Right.
This is a good change, which allows electricians some flexibility to be able to mount that equipment without being in a quandary.
Right.
So to speak.
If there's no further conversation or discussion, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, I move to adopt ordinance forty-three thirty-two, amending the National Electric Code.
I second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Item G, considering an agreement with Kansas Fifteen Limited Partnership authorizing the installation and maintenance of pole attachments in the city right-of-way.
Vice Mayor and Commissioners and Mayor, this is a, an agreement that the staff has been working on, and also the city attorney has been working with the attorneys representing the requestor on this, and they have worked out an agreement. I believe Clifford Turner is on the telephone call, as he identified himself at the beginning of the meeting. He did send us a schematic of the poles that shows the size, and I did print out one of those for you, if you would like to look at it. And then he also provided us with a copy of all the locations that they would like to place these poles. And that, in addition to the agreement, they also need approval for all of these locations as part of that. And it's my understanding that, and I did ask the question, that this would be 4G initially, but would be upgradable to 5G in the future.
That is correct. And, and this is Clifford Turner, if I could just have a moment. My, my company, Selective Site Consultants, we're a real estate and engineering company that provides service to wireless carriers here in the Midwest and, and other facilities throughout the United States. This project is a project that we were engaged by U.S. Cellular to assist them in development of, an enhancement of their wireless services amongst a, a, a number of communities in, in Kansas, one of those being Independence, Kansas. So the installation of these, what they call small cell sites, is an effort by the wireless carrier to densify their network that will give greater capacity for data transfer and, and better service to their subscribers. So that's, that's the goal of this, driven by the FCC and, and their desire to fast-track these projects. That's why we are developing license agreements for work within the right-of-way. The Kansas State has also adapted statutes to define this type of work. And like I said, my company is basically in charge of, of doing real estate and, and engineering activities for, for wireless carriers, in this case, U.S. Cellular, and what we'll propose.
Commissioner, questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to read this statement here to make sure I, I understand this right. It says here, the licensee shall pay to the licenser a one-time application fee in the sum of five hundred dollars for a replacement pole and a thousand dollars for new pole, poles, per pole to recover the licenser's costs associated with the review and approval of the agreement. So you would retain maintenance of, of the pole, is that correct?
Yeah, U.S. Cellular would end up owning these structures, based on the existing infrastructure there in Independence. There, all of our proposed locations are, are new pole installations. In other municipalities where we have independent power companies that we're dealing with, and in some instances, they have struck a license, master license agreement with, with other power utilities. In the, in the Independence area, the power supplier there is Evergy. And so U.S. Cellular has chosen to develop their own sites and, and build these standalone poles.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure who was, who was going to maintain the poles once they are, are set, because they will be there for the lifetime of, well, for the lifetime of 4G and as we move into 5G, so. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
There are other franchise fees associated with this, these installations, are there not, in addition to the one-time pole cost?
I'll let the city attorney respond to that, because he negotiated with them.
Why don't you have Clifford? Clifford, what are the other fees? This is Jeff Chubb.
Well, basically, the FCC and the Kansas State statute has addressed those fees. They've given a parameter of, of what they are requesting, and these are annual per pole location. And FCC and the state have advised in a range. We've done or in process of doing these types of agreements in Parsons and Winfield and Coffeyville and McPherson and Salina. I do believe that we set a standard in Parsons where the annual fee per site was two hundred and seventy dollars.
That would be the repeating fee annually.
And the, the follow-up question is that, is it, that I was gonna ask, is that, is that amount customary? And it sounds like it's not only customary, it's statutory within a range, so. I.
That's an accurate statement.
I am, I'm satisfied that the fee is customary. Mayor Kaplish?
Yeah, this is Mayor Kaplish. Do the sites require power for operating?
Um, yes, sir. They would be powered. Each site will require electrical connection.
Is that overhead or underground service?
As the overall environment there in Independence is, is overhead power, we'll be coordinating with Evergy in, in order to get that power to the site. And in, in most cases, what I'm seeing in similar situations, that the power is overhead.
Okay, then, does the pole require any guy wires to offset the weight of the wire? Or is the distance usually sort of enough that they can support themselves?
The vast majority of these poles will not require any support structure unless they are connected and they strain to other structures where there's electricity, and it might require it. But in consideration of where we're placing them, we are engaged with Evergy. I, I, I would say that there would be a very slim chance of that occurring.
Okay. I noticed, looking around town, some of the, the dead-end runs for a street light requires guy wires and, and some don't, so that's why I was wondering how this would be supported, since it is right on the, the front right-of-way.
And you'll see that type of installation more when you're, when you're utilizing existing infrastructure as your infrastructure and doing replacement, because that replacement has the possibility of, of replacing a guy structure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have another question also. What size poles are you setting at these locations?
I know that what we have done in other jurisdictions, we just completed a negotiation of ordinance in Salina, where basically the overall pole height is no greater than thirty-five feet. The FCC has defined a small cell site of any structure fifty-foot or below. When we're in consideration of what equipment's gonna be on these poles, I think that will be within the, the height limitation that are existing from utility poles that are there.
Okay. And my other question is, will these, all of these installations, will, will they be metered? Or, in the past, we did some cathodic units years ago for Atmos Energy, and those weren't metered. They were just charged a flat fee by West, or Evergy now. I was just wondering, are, are these gonna be metered at each point?
Energy requires that they, they're individually metered. That's the way we design them.
Okay, perfect. That's, I just wondered if that had changed or not. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
I'm good.
This, this is Mayor Kaplish, I'm good.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, move to approve an agreement with Kansas Number Fifteen Limited Partnership authorizing the installation and maintenance of pole attachments in the city right-of-way.
I second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Motion carries.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hayes?
Indeed.
Could I request a favor?
Indeed.
Could we take a recess for five minutes?
Certainly. The commission stands in recess until seven forty-five PM. All those in, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Kaplish, aye.
Does that conclude our business with the, the, the agreement with U.S. Cellular?
It does indeed.
Okay.
Thank you for your input, Clifford.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a nice evening.
We're back in session at seven forty-five. The next commission action is to consider locations for the 2020 street reservicing program. Mike?
This is Mike again. Went, partnered with the county again for asphalt bids, only received one bid, seventy-nine ninety per ton. And then we have the list of streets here, proposed for the 2020 program, and also the ADA estimated costs are down below that. And there should have a map, I think I gave you. And some of these have no ADA, some have minimal ADA, and just a couple have quite a bit of ADA. If you have any questions?
This is the same list we considered earlier for going out to bid. There had been no changes, correct? The same list of streets and?
Yes.
The same locations?
Were taken off.
We took a couple off to stay within budget.
Can you tell them what streets were taken off?
We took off South Park Boulevard from Edison to Cherry, and took off Cedar from Park to Penn.
And both locations on Sycamore, correct?
Yes, both locations on West Sycamore. And this work here is all overlay, there's no milling?
This, this work is all, this work is all overlay, there will be no milling required?
Right, no milling for any of these.
The, and presumably that means that, that the overlay will not interfere with the current storm water drainage system in any of these locations, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner, comments, questions?
Yeah, Mike, the, the cost that you quoted from Heckert, was, is that similar or in line with what has been bid the previous year? Do you know right off the top, in line?
Last year was seventy-five seventy-five, so it went up about four dollars a ton.
Okay. And it seemed, seemed to me like the last year or two, Heckert is the only one that actually bids on these.
Yes, because these are, these are small projects to.
Sure.
To the big companies.
Sure, I understand that. And as far as the locations, how were they determined? How, what, what was the driving factor on that?
By complaints, by a request, by the condition. And then sometimes how they tie in with other streets that we've previously done.
Okay.
Morningside Drive, Morningside Place, they will tie in with Fifth Street, that was done two years ago. Then you look at, I also look at like Coffeyville Avenue, that's quite a thorough fair on the south side. And then North Nineteenth and North Twentieth, a lot of people skirt around that, going from north to south part of town, or vice versa.
Okay.
North Fifteenth, that was a request.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say that again.
North Fifteenth was a request from a homeowner there.
And for a little one-block street, that Dean Street gets a lot of traffic.
Right there behind Beechners, yes, because people don't want to make the jog there, and they just shoot down Dean over to Sycamore.
Yeah, yeah. And we're looking at a total proposed asphalt overlay of two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, and then those additional. And then those additional expenses related to ADA compliance are 100,520 dollars, which makes the total asphalt overlay and ADA project estimated cost of 321,298 dollars and 36 cents.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Mayor Keplish?
Yeah, this is Mayor Keplish. On the, the projects we're considering to approve is just the, the overlay. The ADA is coming back at another proposal with engineering considerations?
Yes, we included that just so you would kind of know the whole, uh, cost of doing these locations.
Okay, so we can discuss if we've got any switchback ramps on that portion later then. Uh, the question I have on the Independence Municipal Airport, uh, this is just to lay the asphalt. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, base prep and tear out of the deteriorated asphalt there. That will be done by city crews or how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, we can handle that.
Okay. Looked like with some of the drainage around there, it needed additional work. Didn't know if we're looking at the total thing at 4,234 dollars or, so. I think that was the only question, so, um, I'm good.
I'm good. Commissioner Yasusi?
I'm good.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Heckert Construction to overlay the locations as recommended by staff.
I second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Keplish, aye.
Motion carries. Item I?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Item I, consider setting the date of August 13th, 2020 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider adopting the, um, 2021 budget.
Lacy?
This, this is just to set that public hearing date and then, um, additional information and details will be presented at that public hearing meeting. So this is just
I hope Leonard could hear that. I could barely hear it myself. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, this is purely just setting the date for the budget public hearing, um, for August 13th. And then at that time, um, prior to that, it will be published in the newspaper, um, the, the limits and amounts that we previously went over at the budget meeting.
Comments or questions from the commission?
I'm good.
Mayor Keplish?
This, this is Mayor Keplish. I have no questions.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to move to set the date for the 2021 Budget Public Hearing for August 13th, 2020 at 5:30 PM in the Memorial Hall Civic Center.
I second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Keplish, aye.
Motion carries. Item J, consider finalizing ballot language for renewing the special use sales tax.
Mayor and commissioners, uh, I have ran through the language with the bond attorneys. They've only made a few slight modifications, which are shown as highlighted. And so we now will need, um, the percentages. And then we will have a resolution prepared to adopt at your August 13th meeting.
Do you have, uh, that language in front of you, Mayor Keplish?
This is Mayor Keplish. I do. I have no problems with the language.
Any questions, uh, from you, Commissioner Yasusi?
No, I have no problems with the language.
Then, uh, the remaining conversation is the distribution of the, uh, special use sales tax by percentage to each of the four, uh, segments of the ballot question. Who would like to start that conversation?
Vice Mayor Hayes, uh, would it be possible to go ahead and send this to the bond attorney or, or counsel to, to look at reviewing it and preparing it? And then, um, we could deal with, we still don't have the information on, uh, our indebtedness and to determine a percentage for the first category. And due to the lateness of the hour today, maybe we need to have a special meeting to fill in the percentages and do that at that time. But if we could get the, the, uh, the attorney that's going to write up the formal proposal to go ahead and prove it and make sure we're good, then just fill the percentages in later.
So what we're looking for then is a, uh, and a, a, a motion to approve the corrections or the, the, um, yes, the corrected ballot language that's before us?
This is Mayor Keplish. Yes, that we go ahead and, uh, just at this time approve the languages with the blank for the percentages.
Commissioner Yasusi, any comments?
No, I, I think that's right because we were waiting on some additional information on that that we, we haven't received. So that would, that would make sense to me.
Um, so anybody else?
Can you clarify what additional information you need? I'm assuming it's from me, but I gave that bond an interest schedule that shows all of our, um, committed bond and interest payments through like 2036, I think. So is there something additional that you need?
And that language, uh, or that, uh, those values were part of the budget summary this year that you've shared with us?
Yes.
Or how else were you communicating that?
I've, I mean, I've emailed it. It's also in that budget packet.
That's where I remember it.
But if, if you need something else, I, I just, I can prepare whatever you need. But I, I was assuming that is what you needed.
Would you agree that the, uh, the indebtedness summary that's provided with the 2021 budget, um, supporting documentation is what we're looking for? Mayor Keplish?
Uh, this is Mayor Keplish. I thought we also talked about looking at the bond for the share program. I don't have all that information with me right now, uh, to, to compare. But I thought we were going to look at, uh, the cost for bonding, the Main Street project, the cost share, and a couple of other things. And looked at possibly the fire truck and some other things in that category too.
And, and I thought we had decided that we were going to have to estimate that.
I could deal with you and Kelly the first of the week and go over that if you, if you want.
We can go over that. I, I think that we're going to have to, to estimate it and just make a, you know, our best guess of that amount because we won't be able to finalize, um, any, any of that information before we have to, um, move forward with the, the ballot language. But we can, we can put in a, an estimate.
As far as it stands now though, if we move to modify, to modify the draft ballot language as presented, that gets it to the bond people?
Yeah, it's already been to the bond people. They've reviewed it and they made these modifications. All they need to do is put it in a resolution form.
Okay, so that's not going to, we're just going to fill in the percentages at a later time. So that's not going to hold up this process?
When you adopt it, if we, if you guys adopt it on the 13th of August, you, you've got to have those percentages when you adopt the resolution.
Indeed. So, uh, so immediately, if we do act on the language alone this evening, uh, we need to follow that up with a, a special meeting plan, uh, probably the beginning of next week to, uh, to finalize, uh, the percentages.
Unless you want to do it at that August 13th meeting and we'll write them in. Whatever you prefer.
Uh, well, my preference is to have it solid for the August 13th meeting prior, prior to going into that because we're, uh, pushed, uh, that's pushing the deadline
Yes.
to the absolute limit. So, uh, my preference this evening would be then to have a motion to accept the language as presented and then also schedule a, a, a special meeting, uh, Tuesday of next week if it's available.
And I would just suggest that that motion be, um, the language as modified by the bond attorney because you'd already made your modifications.
Yes, okay.
Do I have a motion?
Okay, the motion is I move to modify the draft ballot language as modified by the bond attorney.
You got that, Kelly?
Yep.
Good.
I second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Keplish, aye.
Motion carries. Does Tuesday, next Tuesday is July 28th? I'm available in the morning. Does that, uh, how does that look to the two of you?
Uh, I've got an appointment at 11:30, but I'm good, uh, up till then.
Do you want to do 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM Tuesday, uh, July 28th? Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Mayor Keplish. With situations here, just go ahead and schedule a meeting. Oh, I'm, I'm not for sure how long I'm going to be here.
Indeed, we can, uh, uh, teleconference you in if that's okay. Is that okay to teleconference you in then on Tuesday morning, Mayor Keplish?
Yeah, this is Mayor Keplish. That'll be fine.
Very good. Do we need a motion for that, to call that special meeting?
It probably would be good to have that.
Okay, I make a motion that we call a special meeting for July 28th at 9:00 AM. And that meeting is to discuss, um,
Special use sales tax?
Special use sales tax.
I second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor Keplish, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Discussion this evening starts with a discussion, uh, regarding programming for city facilities.
I would like to provide an update that, um, the city staff admin team did work with Trainer, um, on some of the, um, programming on the spacing. And we did get that back to them. We also got back to them. They wanted to see how our, um, accesses were to the public and how we changed that through the COVID with the partitions and, and the separation with the glass and things like that. So we have pictures and a video that were also sent to them for their information. And so that is, um, the participation staff has had in that. And then, um, Vice Mayor Hayes had a conference call with, um, Trainer as well that, um, I sat in on. And would you like to cover that?
Indeed. Uh, last week, uh, after, after the last commission meeting, we scheduled a teleconference with, uh, Trainer. Uh, and we had a conversation with regard to the development in addition to their, uh, construction cost estimates of operating and maintenance costs of, uh, of, uh, the completed facility. And at that time, they felt like they would be able to, uh, help us with that, but probably on a separate contract, uh, saying that, uh, those types of conversations and that level of detail in terms of, uh, um, systems that would be installed and the type and the capacity of systems installed would be, uh, in another phase of their, uh, planning. So, uh, they're willing to help us with that, but probably would only pertain to the, uh, building that they are developing, uh, mechanical and electrical and, uh, those types of plans for. So, uh, the 1916, uh, City Hall building would be able to have, uh, support there. We would probably have to find other resources to help us with, uh, ongoing costs of, uh, maintenance on, uh, building, on the temporary City Hall building as they are, uh, you know, they're just independent of the work that Trainer is doing. So we would have to, uh, look at that in, uh, using either internal expertise, local expertise, or contracting that out to other engineering or, um, uh, professionals who would be able to help us estimate costs for, uh, replacement costs for aging, uh, systems and aging infrastructure, uh, of the building. So, um, that's, uh, that's all to say that, uh, getting an accurate cost benefit analysis is going to take some effort, but I think it's worth it in terms of us being able to make an educated, uh, decision about what, uh, what to do next because, uh, we're talking about a lot of money.
This is Mayor Keplish.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor.
I hear you.
Uh, the cost analysis you were talking about was on the temporary City Hall or the City Hall building?
Uh, part of it was, yes. And part of it was the ongoing operational costs of the, uh, remodeled structure at 1916 City Hall location, plus any other structures that, uh, would be in conjunction with that plan.
Okay. And then the comparative cost that I hear was, uh, you wanted the cost for the completed, uh, 1916 and other support buildings, which would be the emergency, um, services building?
Correct.
So you compare it to what the ongoing maintenance, uh, and operational, operational expenses for the, the temporary City Hall. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. So are you, were you looking at ongoing maintenance like, uh, painting, carpet, new roof, tuck pointing included in that too?
Sure, yeah. All of the relevant costs.
Okay. Yeah, there, there was a glitch in my phone during that conversation. I just wanted to clarify what I was hearing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Kelly?
Any other comments? Kelly?
I would just need to know what direction you want to give staff on moving forward on that request.
Give, give who?
Give staff anything.
Oh, staff.
Give us direction on what you would like us to do to move forward on this request.
I think the, the list that Mayor Keplish just started for us of the relevant costs, the relevant structures that might be aging out, because the, the temporary City Hall building is in a current use and has been used up to this point. So, the age of the systems, the age of the roof, the age of the carpeting, the age of the, the windows relevant, relative to their useful life needs to be understood. And then the replacement costs and the timing of those replacement costs and how they lay into a budget of, you know, ongoing costs so that we can see where we land, let's say 20 years down the line, as these major systems perhaps age out and that we, they need to be replaced or repaired.
This is Mayor Keplish. So, that would include, you know, the system has variable air volume boxes and control valves throughout, so that would have to be included. Probably, you know, might be beneficial for staff for us to take a few minutes and some time and make notes of what we're looking for, that we can give them to, to staff, that they can get it to an engineer or someone that would have the knowledge to put those costs together.
Is that the direction you were looking for, Kelly?
Yes, what we can do is we can draft a scope of work and then put your notes together and then put that together to potentially do a request for proposals for those services, so that you can select who you would like to do that. Would that work?
How, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Please complete what you were saying.
Is that, is that kind of what you're looking at for us to do?
Absolutely, and I'd be glad to help with that. If you'd like, I can sit down and share those.
Absolutely.
Those ideas with you, so that we can, we can give you something concrete to work towards.
That would be great. We'll take any help we can get.
Very good. Any other discussion of programming?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you. Let's discuss then the process for selecting an engineer for the West Maple Cost Share Project.
As you are aware, the city was awarded this project, which is going to be a wonderful improvement. It does have a pretty tight schedule. We are supposed to select a consultant in August. In looking at that, Transsystems did prepare the estimate and assisted us with the grant as far as preparing the information for that. And we are requesting if we could ask them for an engineering agreement to be, be brought back to you for this project, so that we can keep on schedule. And moving forward in these types of projects, I know that Transsystems has done most of our work in the last several years on streets. In talking to Mayor Keplish, he did mention the state has something to do with the architects, where they will go out for proposals and then award that for, I believe, a three-year term. So, perhaps maybe on some of these specialty things like streets, or maybe like on the airport, we always use Lochner, maybe going out for proposals to where we utilize them for a certain period of time, unless the grant or whatever that we're involved in requires any additional procurement. And that way, we would still be staying with the spirit of the procurement policy, but not dragging any of these projects down, especially if they're on a tight timeframe. So, that's just a suggestion and a thought, and just need a direction on what you would like us to do.
Who would like to go first?
This is Mayor Keplish. In these situations, we have Kelly explained. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my thoughts together. At a, maybe at a later commission meeting, we need to add the, the on-call process like Kelly talked about, that we set up a, a plan that we could look at, at how to handle situations similar to this with a true on-call contract. That's pretty lengthy again for tonight, but it would be beneficial for us to all devote some time to it. For the uniqueness of this project, the Cost Share Project, of course, has spanned over two proposals. And with the time crunch, I think it would be best for the city interests to proceed with negotiations for Transsystems for an agreement.
In a, yeah, I would agree that, that the time for this type of conversation would be before we're, we're in the middle of, of a timeline like this. So, prior, you know, when we're, we're not under the gun and we don't have the time pressure on us, we do need to establish what the process is. But in the meantime, Transsystems has the ball and we, we need to get this project moving.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement due to, due to the timeline and requirements. Yeah.
Anything else?
Now, we'll bring a engineering contract back to you as soon as we get it.
Thank you. Reports, Transsystems projects update?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The first project on the list of the slides that Kelly prepared is the KDHE Low Interest Loan, revolving loan. The loan application has been submitted. We're waiting on the loan agreement to be turned from KDHE. We did receive some comments back on our, the engineering report, and we have resubmitted that.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Hayes.
Fix that microphone so that it's pointing towards your mouth.
Is that better?
I, it was lowered earlier and I think it, it was not aimed correctly.
No problem.
We're going to start over, Mayor Keplish.
Okay. We're on the KDHE wastewater low interest revolving loan, and the loan application has been submitted, and we're waiting on the loan agreement. We did receive comments on the preliminary engineering report, and we have addressed those. I checked earlier today, the current interest rate on the loan is about, is a little less than 1.5%. And I believe the city's intent is to have a term for 20 years. The sewer use rates were raised sometime ago to cover the debt service on that loan. It's my recollection. So, when we get the loan agreement, we can run through that with city staff and make sure we're still on the same path. The potential projects for that total 3.1 million, and it includes the Basin 5, sanitary sewer rehab, or Phase 2 of it, and then the Lakeview Lift Station. Those two, the design is, was previously completed under the first loan the city did. And then the rest of the funds are basically described as additional lift station upgrades or INI abatement projects. The next project is the West Maple Street Cost Share. As Kelly mentioned, the grant has been awarded. I believe you have received your award letter, and then you'll be receiving a form to complete that starts the, the process for the formal agreement, so. And that is scheduled to be constructed in 2021, so it does need to move rather rapidly. The next project is the 10th and Main Access Management. That, we did not receive funds for that project, but the city did decide to move forward with a version of it without the sweeping right turn lane and combine that with the current GI project. So, we are currently designing that. We're in the middle of doing survey and the next level of concept. The next project is the Whiskey Creek EDA Grant. We have completed the engineering report. Susan Galmour with the Regional, Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission is working on the application, and we're meshing some of the items with city staff and with that application. The CDBG Grant, Water and Sewer Projects, is due September 25th, and the first step in applying for that is to attend a kayak meeting. Typically, those are in Topeka. And we review the project with potential funding sources, including CDBG. This year, they're going to be held virtually, and I believe it's, Kelly, do you recall the date? She emailed that to us today. I think it's around the middle of August.
She thinks it's August 11th is what she believes it will be.
And the, it's not set in stone yet, but the project we've discussed with Susan and with Kelly is basically taking the Basin 5 project and the Lakeview Lift Station and combining that into a, a project that has a total price tag of around 1.4 million. And, but, and applying for a $700,000 CDBG grant, so that would fund half of that project, and your match would be the KDHE low interest loan money. So, we'll move forward with, along those lines and keep the commission informed of how that proceeds. The Wald Lift Station is the next project on the list. That has been submitted to FEMA for floodproofing. It could also be a potential CDBG and SRF project, since it is a wastewater project. The next project is the Main and Peter Pan Overlay. That project has been awarded to Heckert. We met with them today. They're still on tap for late August or September. That project will be milling, so there is a milling subcontractor that's kind of driving the, the schedule on that. So, as soon as Heckert can get him in, them in here, then they will do the, start the project. The next project is the Peter Pan Phase 3 Economic Development. It's complete, except for there's a drainage issue we are working through. We have some solutions and we're working with the contractor to get prices for those and then discuss further with city staff. The ADA Project, Phase 4, Graham Construction is, should finish 17th Street next week. Then they plan to move to Laurel and to the Episcopal Church following that. So, we're, it's looking like around the 1st of September for completion. In Kitty Land, we, we met with Barb and Lacy at Kitty Land and reviewed the current plan to land a restroom facility out there. And we may do some revisions to the sidewalk plan, just to better accommodate that. And we're working with that concept now, and we'll submit that back to city staff. And then Mike just previously discussed the 2020 Asphalt Overlay Program, and there will be some anticipated ADA work related to that. The Boundary Ordinance, a few years ago, we assisted the city in preparing a Boundary Ordinance. It's time to update that again. The original one we did do, there's some differences with the county ordinance that we're working through, or the county description. And we're working through some of those issues to get those rectified. On the bridge grant, we, we went through that project for the Cherry Street Bridge previously. I'll be glad to answer. Any questions?
Questions, commissioners?
No, I, I have none, Sean.
This is Mayor Keplish. I have no questions.
I have none either. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
We have a report for 223 West Main Street.
Commissioner Hayes, there's nothing to report.
Thank you. Report on 225 South 16th Street?
We just wanted to report, Commissioner Hayes and commissioners, that this property was cleaned up. 20 loads were hauled out and the lot has been cleared. And so, we just wanted to report that back to you.
Are the people still on the premise at that address?
Yes, they still live at the residence. They were given the 15 days to clear and they, we, city staff, street department did an excellent job in removing all the equipment and getting it hauled off.
Yeah, it looks good. So, are they under the impression that they need to keep it clean?
That was made very clear, and both by myself and the code enforcement officer to them.
Okay.
That's. And we'll be monitoring it.
All right, good. Thank you. Thank you, David. 220, 2020 Census Update.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, the update is that we are still ahead. So, that's the update on that. We also, the, on the bottom left-hand corner is what the banners look like that have been designed. We do have those now, and they will be placed within the next week around town at different intersections to try to get some more interest in getting some of our low response areas to participate in the census. We also have a video that they're asking our elected officials to participate in, the mayor or the vice mayor, and since the mayor's out of town, the dean is going to do that, that they're going to comp, put, put together a video of all the different cities, just kind of a promotion on the census. So, that's kind of what's, what's going on now on the census.
I like the banner. Update on K dot C clip applications?
We did hear back that we, we thought we might get one of the projects, but as it turned out, we did not get either one of the projects. So, that was Chestnut from near Penn Avenue to Ninth and Penn Avenue from Morningside to North City Limits. But since everything's prepared, we can try again another year. Correct, Sean?
That is the possible outcome when you have competitive processes or application processes like these, is that some, there are winners and losers. This time around, someone else got the money.
Absolutely, but we got the West Maple, so that was a big win.
Indeed. An update on the South Apron Run-Up Construction Project at the Municipal Airport?
This project came over the, in, over the engineer's estimate, $88,600. So, there is a request into the state to see if they will fund the additional cost of the project. If they do, it would be an additional $8,860 that the city would need to come up with. I have not heard back from the state. If they don't approve it, then we'd have to look at revising the scope of the project. So, I just wanted you guys to know what was going on on that project. We have a lot of projects going on.
Yes, we do. As well we should.